...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. I did hear from Member Benninger, who is running a good 10, 15 minutes behind. He should join us shortly. And Member Angelie is online, is that correct, Kate? Or not?
Not as far as I know.
Okay.
She did not contact me.
Okay.
To get online, is she trying to get online?
Not that I'm aware of at the moment, so. Thank you. We were properly noticed for the meeting this evening. Thank you, Kate and Conrad. And with that, we're going to move right into Superintendent's report, and I'll turn it over to Superintendent Farren.
Thank you, I just have one statement to read this evening. The statement is in response to the recent incredibly irresponsible and inaccurate reporting by area news stations. Rather than bother to thoroughly investigate and talk to staff with firsthand knowledge of the new electronic pass system, local reporters got so excited about a few students inappropriately coming to a school board meeting that they forgot the most important basic tenet of reporting: seek the truth and report it accurately. In other words, get the facts. So many critical facts were left out of this story that is frightening. Equally frightening is how many individuals actually believed what they saw or heard without giving the information a moment's reflection. The vitriol, vulgarity, profanity, and threats directed at me are sickening. To think that teachers and administrators at any school are going to do anything to hurt students is beyond the pale. Please stop and think when you see or hear an article that seems hard to believe. It almost always is. Had the reporters bothered to fully investigate the issue, they would have learned the following facts. The state compels students to attend school, so school staff must keep track of where students are at. That includes when they're not in class, which is actually more important than we know where they are because they're not being supervised when they're in the hallways. Unsupervised students are four more likely to be exposed to inappropriate, risky, and even dangerous behavior. Pass systems have been in place for decades to help keep students safe. The only difference with the e-Pass system is we can now better track and supervise students, so our buildings are safer than ever. Let me repeat that. With the e-Pass system, our buildings are safer than they have ever been. Two years ago, when Arrowhead implemented the block schedule, our passing time between classes doubled to eight minutes. There was no headline that stated Arrowhead students now twice the time to use the facilities as other area schools. It would have been accurate, but it did not make the headline news. Another accurate headline would have been to state, Arrowhead students have as many opportunities to use the facilities as any other high school in the area, likely the entire state, even the entire country. That is a fact. Arrowhead students have all the same opportunities to use the facilities as they did before we implemented the electronic pass system. Depending on their schedule, the students have 30 to 40 minutes, 30 to 40 opportunities each week to use the facilities before school, between classes, at lunch, during study hall, before and after physical education class, and after school. Nothing changed with the new system. If they need to use the facilities during class time, they can still do so. Let me repeat that accurate headline that every local news outlet should be running to correct their previous reporting. Arrowhead students have as many opportunities to use the facilities as any other high school in the area, likely the entire state, even the entire country. We are using a similar, if not the same, electronic pass system as numerous other area schools. Why was there no story about those schools? Actually, a number of schools were included in one article, but the headline only mentioned Arrowhead. And the successful implementation of similar systems was buried at the end of the story. How is that balanced factual, responsible reporting? Get the reader's attention with a misleading headline that implies some radical plan is happening at Arrowhead, and then bury how the same system is working well in other schools. That's not serious reporting. Arrowhead has been the focus of inaccurate and incomplete reporting largely because a few students inappropriately went to a school board meeting just days after the new system was put in place. Why did the students not go to their teachers, or counselors, or school nurse, or the associate principals, or the principal? The staff at the school oversee classroom passes, not the school board. If anyone had a concern, all they had to do was go talk to the appropriate staff members. Our staff would have worked with and will work with any student and their parents to make sure their needs are being met. Is it possible that actually just addressing a concern at the lowest possible level was not the goal? Is it possible that some individuals like to generate controversy and get attention at both the local and national level? I have at least one message that definitely gives the impression at least one individual was excited to make the national news, despite the incredibly negative portrayal of the district. Why not give this system more time? To bypass teachers and counselors, and the nurse, and assistant principals, and go directly to the school board after a system that has barely had a chance to operate should cause some healthy suspicions to the motivation. Considering the fact that students can still use the facilities as they always have, with the only actual change being we can now accurately and timely identify when there are potential misuses, it's a shame the reporters did not stop to think they might be getting duped. There was so much more information and so many facts reporters could have considered and included. To just put speakers at a public school board meeting on the news is the definition of irresponsible. Anyone can say anything at a public school board meeting. They do not have to report facts, or tell the truth, or even come close to reality. There's no vetting of anything said during the public comment portion of a school board meeting. I have actually heard countless bizarre statements over three decades of attending school board meetings. Everything said during public comments should be taken with a grain of salt before it is broadcast on the news. It certainly should be vetted by reporters or made clear that the expressed comments have not been verified and may not be accurate. Reporters and news stations really should hold themselves to a higher bar. In addition, I'm sorry, in addition to the almost bizarre reaction to a few students speaking in the school board meeting, it appears the reporters have fixated on the term "limit." Instead of asking questions of staff members and doing some actual investigative research or reporting, the reporters quickly and falsely assumed and reported that we are literally not allowing students to use the facilities if they exceed their weekly pass limit. That is both ridiculous and inane. No staff members going to impede students who need to use the bathroom for any legitimate reason. We are not standing in anyone's way, we're not tackling students out the door, we're not telling students to go to the bathroom in their pants. Seriously. Where's the common sense? Where's healthy skepticism? Where's the common understanding of absurd? Anyone who would have bothered to conduct themselves as a true reporter, or journalist, or reasonable citizen would have sought out our staff members alone. The term "limit" is used for us to track passive usage. By knowing how often students are asking to be out of class, we can identify if the student has a medical issue or unusual circumstances. We can make sure parents know and can be a part of any plans to address any issues. Equally importantly, we can prevent misuse of passes that leads to bullying, vaping, vandalism, and other risky, dangerous behaviors in our halls and bathrooms. We use the term "limit" as equivalent to "flag." If a student is asking out of class numerous times per day or week, we simply have an obligation to determine if there's anything we can do to help minimize the lost instructional time. We will work with students and their parents to come up with the best possible plan. As a public high school, just like every other public high school in the country, perhaps the world, we want to meet the needs of our students while also minimizing disruptions to learning. The limits are intended to encourage students to plan their days so they use the facilities outside of class time whenever possible. Expecting students to use the bathroom between classes, and at lunch, and during study hall, and before and after physical education class is not new. It is not unique to Arrowhead. Every school across the country for decades has encouraged, facilitated, and expected students to use the bathroom outside of class time whenever possible. That's just logical. That's mature, responsible behavior. We are promoting a learning-focused culture where instructional time in the classroom is considered sacred. For the sake of everyone's learning, we want to minimize interruptions and distractions. That is neither news nor newsworthy stuff. Parents expect us to promote positive, engaging learning environments that are free from distractions and disruptions. Parents also expect us to ensure the buildings are as safe as possible. Hall pass systems, whether paper or electronic, help keep classrooms focused on learning and our halls and bathrooms safe. Anyone interested in reporting the facts should have emphasized that any student with unusual circumstances that needs accommodations will be able to use the facilities when needed. Anyone interested in reporting facts should have emphasized that students having any sort of emergency will be allowed to use the facilities. These are just normal, reasonable, longstanding, ongoing practices that have not changed. There's no controversy. There's no story here. Arrowhead has high expectations. We're committed to making Arrowhead the premier high school in the state, if not the Midwest, if not the country. Our students and staff are doing great things. We are trending upward in just about every area. We're doing everything we can to make Arrowhead as safe as possible and as focused on learning as possible. I would ask people to please not draw conclusions based on sensationalized and accurate and complete news stories. In fact, if you ever see another sensational headline or story about Arrowhead, please take a breath, take a pause, ask yourself that there might not be more to the story, then reach out to the most appropriate staff member so that we can get you the truth. We will get you the facts. We will be able to explain everything we're doing. I also invite anyone who ever wants to learn more about Arrowhead to set up a time to come meet with us and tour our schools. You will see caring, compassionate, professional environments where students are safe and the focus is on learning and treating others with kindness, dignity, and respect. It would be nice to see just one local news outlet truly correct their story with a new accurate headline and retraction of the previous reporting, and they make sure their national affiliates correct their stories, but I doubt that will happen. If any reporter who does watch this, does see value in correcting incomplete and inaccurate reporting, here's the new accurate headline. "Arrowhead students have as many opportunities to use the facilities as any other high school in the area, likely the entire state, even the entire country." If there's interest in adding to that headline with something that's even a little more exciting, they could add, "Thanks to the e-Pass system, our students are making more responsible decisions and our schools have never been safer." That's really all I have to say about that system, and I'm hoping that we can put this behind us very quickly. Students who come to the school board, they need to understand, while they're welcome to do that, that's not where these kinds of problems get solved. They need to talk to the building staff, talk to the teachers, assistant principals, nurse, counselors. Those are the people who can address concerns about an e-Pass system. School board members are not in the buildings every day. They are not responsible for overseeing the system. They're a governance entity. The administration oversees the daily operations. Students should be coming to us when they have questions and concerns. Thanks.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I just have one. I think the story got way out of hand, and I agree with a lot of what you say, Conrad. The e-Pass should never ever made the national news or anything like that, and I understand all the good that it does in tracking students in this day and age. I think a lot, the main thing that got a lot of people upset was the seven times a week limit. And I'm just wondering, do we really need that, or could we just make it limitless, but just track the students that are abusing it and just follow?
Our administrative team will be looking at that question. We have to give it some time.
Thank you.
So far, right now, the seven is absolutely realistic.
Teachers can already override.
And they can override if they need to.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. I think just to piggyback on that from me, we are one of five districts in Wisconsin that are doing this. So it's us, Markishaw, Tosa, Pewaki, St. Francis. Four of those schools.
There's way more.
Those are the only ones that I found. So those are the ones that I found that are in this area. We're the only ones that have a limit. Maybe, obviously, I don't have all the information, but that's from what I've found. We are the only ones creating an arbitrary limit, even though the statement is that we can get more passes. So that's my concern as well. The only other concern that I have is, is there a way? I know that there have been several board members that have had concerns about data collection. I know this company does data collection. Is there a way that we can opt out of data collection with regards to this system?
I'm not sure what people think as far as data, but there's no different data than we've ever had. There's no medical records associated with this. We could have always been keeping track of when students were out of class using paper passes. We have cameras in the hallways that help us monitor where students are going. Really, nothing's changed. We have a number with how many times a student left class, and that, all of that is deleted at the end of every year. But there's no personal information, no medical information, nothing private.
But the e-Pass system, does the e-Pass system actually collect data from Arrowhead?
And how many numbers of times a student leaves class each year? We'll have it at the end of the year, it gets deleted.
So they don't collect that and use that number and use that information?
Nope.
If you have a need for it.
Okay. Thank you for your questions. Next on our agenda this evening is facility planning report, and we have one item there. I hope that board members have had the opportunity to review a letter that, in fact, I drafted and with Conrad's input. We would look to send that out to the village president, President Fannerstall. The letter itself is a thank you for the amount of engagement that both Ryan Bailey, as well as President Fannerstall, have had with our board in discussions around annexation. As we continue our long-term planning for Arrowhead, annexation is one of those areas that we've considered. What kind of opportunities would arise out of a greater partnership with the village of Heartland? And so in lieu of board members attending a board meeting and making a personal request of the village board for more of an intent and purpose statement from the board, I took the liberty of drafting, drafting a letter that requests the same. So with the board's understanding and approval, the letter would be sent to President Fannerstall. Any discussion on this?
I think the letter looks great. I don't know if we should give them a timeframe because they could, you know, it could be open-ended as to when they would get back with us.
That's a very good point. It's been kind of open-ended. Would you recommend a timeframe? What would that be?
Well, I don't want it to sound like we're holding their backs to the wall or anything, but something realistic. Maybe a month? I don't know. What does anyone else?
Well, the other option would be to ask them specifically to speak about this at one of their upcoming board meetings as an agenda item. I don't know if there would be action necessarily that needed to be taken, but at least we could get some guidance in the public forum that we can rely on.
I'm operating on the assumption that they'll have to have a board meeting agenda on the topic. Because of the, yeah, they'll have to find some consensus in drafting a response. So I think by virtue of the letter, it kind of prompts something on their side that's a bit more a formal process.
Maybe we just ask them to stay up at their next official meeting.
And a response by the end of the year? Would that kind of timeframe suffice?
I'd give it a little time.
Okay. I'll add that language. And do we need to circle on this again as a board, or once that language is added and it means administrative approval, can we just sub it? Okay. Well, with that, I'm looking for a motion to approve the Arrowhead letter of intent to the village of Heartland board.
I'll make the motion. I'll sub that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ann is here, Member Angelie. Okay, thank you. The motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Okay, next up is our public comment area. And before we start, I'm going to read the rules of engagement. The communications and comments from members of the public on the agenda item requires, anyone wishing to speak to the board must be present and register on a sign-up form. A three-minute time limit is enforced. Public comment is only accepted during this agenda item. Sharing of minutes with another person addressing the board is not permitted. Speakers should address the board as a whole, not individual board members, and should remain polite and respectful. Only the board president may respond to the comments or questions. The board president has the authority to ask another board member or administrator to respond. Board members will not respond to public comments unless designated by the board president. The board president has the authority to cease any conversation at any time for any reason. Public comments will be taken under advisement. If public comments are in regard to an agenda item, when the board discusses that particular item during the meeting, the board may or may not address the comments, questions raised by the public. Only the board will discuss and/or take action. There will be no citizen communications during the time of agenda topics. And lastly, speakers are not immune from legal consequences related to the content of their speech. So with that, our first speaker is Jane Owen.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me? Thank you. First of all, a compliment to the board. I want to reiterate on changing the policy for bathrooms by sex, which is DNA. Moving on, on the e-Pass topic, I'm going to go a bit fast. I find it very onerous and egregious. It's the irony of a previous complaint by someone at Arrowhead that the freshmen were reading Handmaid's Tale with that parent's approval, but not saying anything about the system forcing compliance with an invasion infringement on civil liberties, privacy, freedom, so on and so forth. It was very interesting, the recent comment this evening on "what-if-ing." It's not safer than ever. There's no hardened entries. The entry staff have little to no situational awareness of people entering the building and what they're doing. They use the word "can use the facilities," not quote-unquote "will be able to use the facilities." There's a big legal difference. It's entirely correct for the students in public to be suspect of the motivation. So of course they would go to the board with the full administration present. That's entirely the right place to do it. It was not brought up in policy committee. It was not researched in any committee, brought up with suggestions and recommendations to the board for action. It was simply imposed on the students on the first day of class with no notice to the parents beforehand. Lost instructional time? No, it's block periods. They are now forced to try to get as close as they can to 20% speaking time by the instructors. That's only 17 minutes out of an hour and 25-minute block, and the rest is student learning. They're not losing any instructional time. Quotes that they want to minimize interruptions, but it's a four-step system while the Arrowhead is still considering a cellphone ban. So the students have to ask permission to access their device, interruption number one, to log into the system, apply for a pass time, interruption number two, number three is get it approved, and number four is when they return. That's already four interruptions for one student at a time. You can have three students at a time per class go. That's a lot of interruptions now. It's not doing everything to make Arrowhead as safe as possible. There's no backpack checks for unauthorized vaping or other materials when students come in. There's no control for over-the-counter products, whether that might be caffeine products, meds that aren't prescription, what have you. There are already five monitoring levels in place, which is the teachers in the classrooms, perhaps paras, what have you. Obviously, all underutilized. There's administration, some who teach, some who are walking the hallways. There are SROs. There's hallway monitors, and there's cameras. Obviously, somebody has decided, no, we're not going to use our control mechanisms. We're just going to cave and now monitor almost 2,000 students instead of taking care of a handful of students. There's still no public notice to the taxpayers and the public about this policy, how it's stored, who has access to it, any punitive measures. And last of all, there was a social media comment that you missed a branding opportunity, and these are not from me, something I read, that it should have been called "e-piss." To which, with my sense of humor, I responded, "For e-piss, select number one. For e-poop, select number two. For tummy and all other matters, select number three." I yield the rest of my time.
JPMorgan. Absolutely.
Thank you.
If anyone is like missing one, or if there's extras, just tell me at the end of my public comment time, and I'll quote them. So, quick explanation, we did a little, like, survey for all the students at Arrowhead. We did like a sample population, random survey, so we did like the AP stats method of things. Yeah, it was a good survey. So we have all of our responses, and then we have a few choice responses in the beginning. So, here you guys, the Arrowhead student board, this is my second time here. Thank you for listening to me and the students. And this is kind of like our perspective on things because I don't think we've heard enough. So, yeah. We will be speaking in public comment, so just to let you know, like, we're just going to be more limited, and I thought I was going to be talking with you guys, just like not at you guys. But that's how it is, and I respect that. And basically, yeah, so if we just like accidentally violate any rules without us knowing, because we're just not professionals in the setting, you know, we're just kids. So yeah, thank you, and I succeed the rest of my time to the kids behind me. I would like to invite up Teres Nolan and Dia.
By the way, we will be speaking individually, so three minutes each.
Hi, everyone. I'm Tessa Lam, and I'm a sophomore here at Arrowhead High School. I'm here to share a brief summary of the student-led survey that I created. So we came to the survey to get a better understanding of the student's opinions. So the survey, we had 220 student responses, and then 195 of them included written grievances along with their answer. So in total, we had 215 of the students who voted against the e-Pass. Only five students voted in favor. So this is also a 97.7 rate of student dislike. And then also, I compiled the written responses into seven different categories in the packet. There's like a table. So the top three issues that students mentioned were pass quarters and cooldowns, process and technical problems, and time limits. And then also, I compiled some sample comments for you guys, so I'll just read a couple. Sawyer 2 said, "I hope to believe that this system is less about the school managing a vaping problem, and is instead a gross overreach of administrative power manifesting itself in the form of a virtual student tracker, akin to those installed in one's pet to keep track of them, masquerading as a help tool." Secondly, "The e-Pass system makes school feel more like a prison than a place that encourages learning." Lastly, "The e-Pass system is a punishment. It is, without doubt. Entirely unfair to give the inconvenience and the punishment to everyone regardless of the record." So as you can see, the students are asking for a fair system that accommodates for everyone's needs. These are just a few of 195 comments. I mean, the rest are in the appendix at the end of the packet. Thank you for your time for considering the student perspective. Next, I'll have Dia Aurora with her 235 petition signatures speaking.
Hi, everyone. My name is Dia Aurora. I am a junior at Arrowhead High School, and I apologize for my appearance. First of all, I just got off of work. And then second, I would like to address what was said earlier about the e-Pass. I agree. I do understand why the e-Pass was put into place. I understand the security behind it. And I do want to acknowledge that I do not believe anyone here on the board, any administration, is intentionally trying to harm us. But I would also like to bring up the opinions of over 600 students at Arrowhead, which is over 25% of our student population. Over 600 people, including on change.org, the Google form, and four pages back and forth worth of signatures that are not in approval of the e-Pass. With that much, with that much disapproval with the e-Pass, I do believe it is the responsibility of the board to look into this matter deeper. And I'm not saying that we should have the e-Pass completely removed. I agree that there should be a balance. There should be safety in our classrooms. But at the same time, issues like administration, you cannot control that. No matter what, let's say it's in the middle of the classroom, you already used three passes and you bleed through. Then you have to go to the bathroom. Let's say you do get permission, you still have seven minutes. In seven minutes, how are you supposed to go to the nurse, get a pad, then you have to go to the bathroom, change? That can't happen in seven minutes. It causes unnecessary tension. It causes anxiety in students. If we're trying to learn, why do we have to be preoccupied with all of these things? There is no way for us to control it. And besides administration, there are so many different problems that can happen unintentionally. I do not believe that the seven-minute time period is enough. I believe personally we need to increase this time period. I'm not asking for a complete removal, but I'm saying that we need to consider that seven minutes is not enough, and especially the limit that is being imposed. And after speaking with countless students, they agree, they understand why it's being put into place. I would like to acknowledge to everyone, we do understand as students why this is put into place, but we want to come to a middle ground. And I believe that as administration, it is your responsibility, and over 25% of your students are having grievances with this pass, that you should do something about it and make it more fair for us students. Thank you.
Andy Record?
Right, Hattie's not with us right now.
Oh, okay. Will Boudia?
Can my classmates pass out some more flyers quickly?
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you, girls. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Will Boudia, I'm a member of the cross-country team, track team, marching band, DECA, Warhawk Interact, and various other clubs, and I'd like to address the legal and ethical implications of the E-Pass system currently in use. From what we can see, this system was implemented without full school board approval, and certainly without informed parental consent. That's concerning, because parents are trusting both the administration and this board to protect their children's privacy and well-being. Tracking bathroom usage, location, and personal time through a third-party company raises serious questions about data privacy and student rights. These aren't abstract issues, we're talking about minors having their daily habits recorded and stored by software that parents never explicitly agreed to. Beyond legality, there's a moral dimension here. We are students, not employees being modern for productivity, yet even in a workplace, it will be illegal for an employer to deny bathroom access or to monitor someone's private bodily functions. If we are preparing for college or the workforce, we should be treated with at least the same level of basic human dignity. We are not here to attack any one person or administrator. This is about the system, and whether it aligns with the values that the district claims to uphold, trust, responsibility, and respect for students. When a policy compromises privacy and autonomy, when it excludes parental input, and when it's implemented without clear oversight, it stops being a safety tool and becomes an overreach. So tonight, I ask that the board reconsider whether the E-Pass system truly reflects what our community stands for, and whether it belongs in a public school environment funded by the very people it's meant to serve. Thank you. I succeed my time.
Thank you, Will. Connor Dodge.
Hi, my name is Connor Dodge. Just to say, all in your hands right now is page 120.13 of O'Sconces statute, and then in my other hand right here, I have a very public email between JP Mullen and the superintendent, which I will be breaking down. So, the superintendent goes on to state that school boards by their very nature are not responsible for the daily operations of the building, which this is a lie. I will then go on to state, school boards do not supervise or evaluate any employee on the school district beside the superintendent. Yes, this is correct, but these two have a very distinct difference. You can say that maybe, okay, yes, one, sorry, maybe one yes is about the superintendent and the school, but that does not mean that the superintendent, his effects on the school change. And then I'll go on to say that the administration is responsible for the daily operations of the district, which includes the primary goals of ensuring students safe as possible. Yes, I believe this to be true. The administration is responsible for making students, I'm sorry, are adequately supervised, which goes in the other parts. The administration is expected to use data to drive decisions, which we've already proven is very, could be inaccurate. The superintendent also talks a lot about responsibility. I believe he is irresponsible in mentioning what says on page 120.13, which I will state now. Make rules of the organization, sorry, predation and government of the schools of the school district, including rules pertaining to conduct and dress of pupils in order to maintain good decorum and favorable academic atmosphere. This is day-to-day operations. The board has the ability to change day-to-day operations, they make rules on day-to-day operations. Part B of this also says, in addition to the rulemaking authority granted, school boards under par A, the school district administrator or any principal or teacher designated by the school district administrator to make rules with the consent, with the consent of the school board. Then going back to the email, the superintendent says the E-Pass system promotes what should be our shared values. This isn't what our should-be shared values are, these are our shared values. Yes, we care about learning, we care about responsibility, but when you say that this proves this, you have no responsibility. There's no responsibility to what the actions of this paper says you trespass. Then the superintendent goes on to state, the E-Pass system helps make all those things happen far more effectively than the paper pass. You're directly saying there's a difference to the paper pass, which in this email, you've also stated that is incorrect, there's no difference in this paper pass. Between non-instructional time and the allowed passes, there are more than enough opportunities for students to use the facilities. This is actually also incorrect. Based off the fact that if there are less students who are in the bathroom during school, there's also more, sorry, let me re-correct myself. If there are less students that are in the pass during, sorry, during class time, then there will be more students who are in passing time. This also means a flooding of bathrooms. He also goes on to state, by talking to each other, I believe that this was an incorrect, I believe that this was an incorrect point. He states a lot that, yes, talking to each other, he never actually talked to the students. He never once even talked to the students. He then again brings up this article that he got information which he has not proven or brought forward. We know nothing of information that proves that students wanted this or is even good. He's going off of the basis that students from other schools, other schools, it's like treating a child differently, just because, oh yeah, maybe they need something else. This is no difference.
Connor, I'm just going to remind you, try and wrap it up, we're running close to the clock.
Yeah, it's okay, I can be done.
Okay. If you wouldn't mind, a couple comments. I want to truly tell you how impressed I am with the entire group of you coming forward. This is civic engagement.
Thank you, ma'am.
This is what happens in a public forum. When there is a grievance, you bring it forward to decision-makers.
Thank you, ma'am.
So I appreciate that all of you who are, I'm sure, sound academicians, involved in clubs, athletics, after-school activities, and study, that you've taken time out of your evening to come here is an honor to our board.
Thank you, ma'am.
So I want to be clear about that. Our board has come up to speed on the E-Pass system, and as always, whether it's a policy that the board puts in place, or an administrative rule that arose out of purview of administration, which in fact, Connor, this was day-to-day operations, which involve academic outcomes and security and efficiencies about the school are the purview of our administrator. Superintendent Farners' purview includes the bathroom situation. That purview in fact has always been in that domain, and in fact, when I reviewed it with our legal attorney who advises our school, he reminded me that that's historically how it's always happened, it has landed in that domain, and that in fact, he did not feel that this butted up against any kind of improper legal boundaries. That was the impression of our legal consult. So I, again, very much appreciate that you guys have been here, and young women, and you have brought a lot of good information. You've handled yourself most respectfully, and I greatly appreciate that. The situation as it is right now is that, like all policy that's significant, like all administrative rules that are put in place that are significant, there is an assessment period, an ongoing review that will happen. So our conversation between our administrative team and our board has been just that, the anticipation is that we will be reviewing this like we do all other important decisions. And out of that review, there may be change, there may not be change, but that will all be a part of the information that's brought forward. So we appreciate hearing from students, and you know, we look forward to the ongoing review that our board diligently does with all such matters. So thank you so much for being here.
Okay, ma'am, thank you for your time.
Not at all.
I'll say that I would agree with Madam President on everything she just said. One thing, as part of the review process, that we're all going to learn as board members and administration, I'd be curious to know how administration would handle the situation in which the young woman brought up in terms of the menstrual issues that might come about and the time that's needed there, how would that situation?
It's exactly what I referred to. That situation would be handled the same way it's always been handled. The students will have enough time, all the time they need to take care of the issue. Doesn't change whether it's a hard copy pass or an electronic pass. That's been in all the communications. We will accommodate any student that's having any issues.
Okay. Make it quick.
Thank you guys for like just coming here, like listening to us. I know that we might have accidentally kicked you guys into the library, that could be something that might, you know, just get in your time and stuff, but sorry about that. But thanks for just listening to us. I like being just in this because like I feel like I'm actually getting heard, you know, it's just good stuff, so thanks, guys.
Good. I hope that in fact, really, this is just another educational opportunity. I think it's important for young people, for students, to know what the engagement process looks like in a public arena, and hopefully this has given you a small opportunity to learn how to organize and, you know, speak appropriately and be respectful and engage. So I'm glad you're here.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is our consent agenda. Contained herein tonight is the report from the September 10th, 2025 Regular Board Meeting, our bill payments report, our donations, our personnel report, and that's it. And as Member Angelie, are you with us, Member Angelie, to read off the donations report per usual?
Yes, Madam President, I am available, thank you very much. We have one generous donation I would like to share with everyone from Adron, am I, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, if not, please let me know, Jeff. Adron Tool Corporation, from September 12th, made a $5,000 donation to our Technology and Engineering Partnership Program. So thank you very much for that very generous donation.
Thank you, Member Angelie. Is there any discussion on our consent agenda with the board? If not, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Member Angelie, would you like to second that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval of our consent agenda this evening, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Committee reports, first up this evening is Member Hammer and Member Wood with our curriculum committee report.
Okay, we had a meeting on September 18th, and it was pretty well-attended. The World Language teacher, Serena Powers, came to update us on a trip to China that originally was set to happen a while ago, but didn't happen because there weren't enough students. So now they're planning a 2026 student trip to China with another high school, I do believe it's Brookfield Central. So hopefully they'll be able to go, and we do need to approve that tonight. Associate Principal Gordon reviewed the details from the 2025 summer school program, which was very encouraging and looked like it had been a good summer school session. And Sue, I don't know if you want to talk about the Wisconsin Act 95 that we discussed, anything to update or?
Not from the committee necessarily, I just think most people heard the explanation regarding some statistics I was able to share with the senior class in terms of how that, how some grading practices, weighted grades for AP, and our 12-point grading scale had impacted the rank system. We talked about how that diversified the top 5 and 10% for Wisconsin guarantee, and that we will continue to evaluate those practices as we implement Act 95.
Okay, and then we discussed the 2025-2026 Education for Employment Plan. It's a state-required plan to ensure that schools are addressing career and technical education, and we will be moving that forward for a discussion in action also. And then we were headed into the curriculum review cycle, but we did not really have not enough time for that, so that was moved to our next committee meeting, which is October 16th. And also in our notes is a discussion for future item of Constitution Day, but we did decide to move that to policy, so that will fall into Mr. Ferris's purview. Our next meeting, like I mentioned, is October 16th, we're going to review the new curriculum proposals, curriculum review cycle, and new course proposals. And then we also added another curriculum committee meeting on October 23rd because we have so much to go over, and so little time. We're going to be reviewing new course proposals for film and the process for reviewing library books. And so two committee meetings coming up, the 16th and the 23rd, and please plan on attending, everybody, if you can, 6:45.
I just wanted to clarify, is it the 16th or the 18th?
16th.
Okay. The notes need to be updated. That's my job. We've got each other, we're family.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. An audit curriculum then was the 2026 World Languages Revised China Trip Proposal. So at this point, I'm looking for a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second is the 2025-26 Education for Employment Plan Approval. I'd like a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much to our co-chairwoman. Next up is Finance and Building and Browns Report.
Yeah, no report, we had a closed session regarding security a few weeks ago, and our next meeting is October 21st.
Super.
Can I just make a plug? Sure. Next week, Wednesday, is our annual meeting, so hopefully everyone here, and you'll invite all of your friends and neighbors to come out and hear the budget hearing at 6:00 AM and the annual meeting at 6:30.
Thank you. Next up is Personnel and Legislation Committee Report. Okay.
The only thing, Madam President, the only thing I have for personnel is just that we have, our next meeting is Thursday, November 6th at 6:45 AM.
Excellent. Thank you so much to both of our chairwomen. Next up is Policy Committee with Chairman Ferris.
Thank you, Madam President. We had a great meeting yesterday, thank you everyone for attending, 10%, it's wonderful. We started the meeting with some changes that were coming from Neola, some minor changes, nothing too major. We had some questions as a group, went over those with our superintendent. Secondly, we thank you, Kate, for... Secondly, we thank you, Kate, for noticing a change in our Human Growth and Development policy, changing a word from gender to sex. Both of those are open for discussion and action this evening. Then we also had continued discussion on the bell-to-bell. We're getting closer. Some of the things that were discussed yesterday basically had to do with... The first one, there was a discussion potentially about if we wanted to have the principal's cabinet be a part of this idea. That was basically, as a team, we voted that down for several reasons. Basically, also, we had some great discussion, and I want to personally thank Amy for bringing forth a good deal of information on what happened in Wauwautosa and where they stand. We are going to continue to discuss this and look at their policy as a potential benchmark for our next meeting. We discussed all the feeder schools, what the feeder schools look like, what their policies are in place, how that would correlate with ours, how that would have some good synergy potentially. So we're gonna get a little further down this road. We also had a, let's see, discussion, potential discussion about, once the policy is... If a policy is approved, a couple ideas of if we wanted to have public engagement with regards to coming up with how this is going to be enacted. I know that that's actually in the purview of our administration, so that's gonna need a little bit further discussion. We'll continue down this road on the bell-to-bell in our next meeting, but getting closer, which is great. Then we also looked into revising the language for a policy regarding restoring biological truth that's benchmarked off of an executive order. That one, we are going to have a little bit more synergy with the curriculum committee. So the... After a little bit of discussion, we decided as a team that it makes sense to have curriculum, bring forth pieces that they want to discuss first, and then we can correlate those two pieces together. So that will also be coming as a piggyback off of your upcoming meeting. The next meeting is gonna be November 4th. I can't believe I'm saying November.
I know.
It's my birthday.
Oh, that's your birthday. It's my birthday.
It's a birthday.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman Ferris. So out of that, we have discussion and action on Policy 2414, Human Growth and Development. At this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to Section 8 on our agenda of...
More discussion and action for the whole of Neola policy.
Oh, thank you so much. I don't know how I could have overlooked that. That's a beastie right there. Okay. Discussion and action. I know I'm supposed to read all of this off, too, aren't I, Kate, to make it all official and everything? I'm looking for a motion to approve the following. Neola policy updates on 34-2, policy... I'm sorry. Neola policy 34-2 recommended updates by law 0144.5, that's Board Member Behavior, Communications, and Code of Conduct. Bylaw 0166.1, consent agenda. Policy 3431, employee leaves. Policy 3432, employee sick leave. Policy 5112, entrance age. Policy 5505, academic honesty. Policy 5350, student use or possession of intoxicants, drugs, or paraphernalia. Policy 7460, conservation of natural and material resources. And last but not least, policy 8420, school safety.
Keep that motion? I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Other reports? WASBE? Anything from Lynn?
So I attended the regional meeting for our Region 11. We ended up having our annual meeting where we got to vote on our representative or director. Our... They ended up voting... So we had three people to elect from. The person that ended up winning was Kathleen Weed-Vincents, if I'm pronouncing it right, from Greendale. She was sitting on right now as the interim person until she was elected. She is from the Greendale School Board and ended up getting the most votes that night. So we did have a couple other feeder schools that were intended with us that night, as well as with the other school districts that were in our session.
Super. Thank you for going. I think Mr. Ads had joined you that evening, is that correct? Were you...
I intended to, but I wasn't able to.
Okay. I hope it was a good meeting. Thank you for the report. Blige. I can also update that, being a part of the Policy and Resolutions Committee for WASBE, the Policy and Res process has started. We met as a committee for the first of what are three consecutive meetings, reviewed a great number, probably the usual number of resolutions that came into the PNR Committee. And next, we meet again in Stevens Point in November. So this, again, kind of culminates in the delegate assembly, which, Member Blige, is our delegate, and our board will have discussions late December around some of those resolutions. Seesaw? Anything from Member Angelie? Hearing none?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. Okay. And then, nothing at this time on the Arrowhead District School Board Assembly, other than some data collection has happened. Perhaps, Member Blige, you wouldn't mind filling us in on what you've taken towards that?
So as I say, at our last assembly meeting, it was brought up in discussion about contacting our local representatives that oversee all of the feeder schools as well as us. So I created a survey to put out to all school board members that was sent out through each of the school board superintendents, and we collected the data. I don't remember right off the top of my head how many ended up getting responses, but I think it was just under 20. And we have our top three that will be bringing to our representatives, and hopefully, they'll join us for our evening, so we can have some dialogue with them around those topics.
I'll be targeting November for that session. Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is new business. Hearing none, we'll move into future agenda items. Hearing none. I'm looking for a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.851C.
Make a motion.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
I'd like to finish the evening with a little prayer for the school. Everyone, to the Lord Jesus, we ask you to bless his school, the grounds it sits on, the teachers that teach in it, the administration that run it. Lord, we ask you to send down your angels to protect all of them under these grounds, help them to see each other with your eyes rather than with their own. Pray for this, Jesus, in your...